Roll call, McCarrigan here, Colwell.
Here.
Vidlaq.
Here.
Solomon.
Here.
Join me in the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, for public information, a copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is available for review. It's above Tom. For a notice of changes in the agenda by the city clerk, additions may not be made to this agenda less than twenty-four hours before the beginning of the meeting unless added under item five of this agenda. Do we have any changes?
No changes, your honor.
Five citizens with business not scheduled on the agenda as required by state law, no matter may be considered under this item unless council determines that the matter requires emergency action. Do we have any emergency actions?
Aye, Your Honor.
Okay. Six, closed session, council reserves the right to enter into closed session if deemed necessary if the item is on the agenda as per section eighty-four dash fourteen-ten of the Nebraska revised statutes. Seven, Scottsbluff youth council. No youth council tonight. Okay. Eight, consent calendar. Items in the consent calendar are proposed for adoption by one action for all items unless any member of the council requests that an item be considered separately. Do we have any questions or comments on the consent calendar? Do we have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
A motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay, motion by Solomon, second by Colwell. Any other questions, comments? Call the roll, please. Colwell?
Yes.
Solomon?
Yes.
Vidlaq?
Yes.
Scanlon?
Yes.
McCarrigan?
Yes.
Nine, public hearings. Council to conduct a public hearing set for this date at six P M. to consider the proposed ordinance text change to chapter twenty-five, article three regarding planned business center zoning district. We'll open the public hearing.
All right, Zach Law, we used Development Services Director. So in March, Rockstep Capital, who owns Mall, submitted application to amend the zoning ordinance for the planned business district. Currently, the minimum lot size is five acres per lot. After working with Rockstep and reviewing other cities, we've determined that it would be better to repeal the minimum lot size and replace it with a minimum district size. After reviewing the three P B C districts in town, the smallest one is the Murdochs one. It's about eight acres. So we determined eight acres would be a good minimum district size. And uptown, Scottsbluff, there's the mall, and Kmart, they're approximately forty-six acres. And then Main Street Market is about twenty-four acres. So all three P B Cs would be conforming. The reason they're pursuing this change is to allow for the development of outlots. So you can hopefully convert some of that parking lot into actual development. Like I said, we've reviewed other cities such as Lincoln has something similar, and we kind of utilized that. And then, planning commission reviewed it and made a positive recommendation on the approval. And staff is requesting a waiver of the three readings.
Thank you.
Do you have any other questions, comments?
Do you know what they're doing with that or plans or?
This is just the first step. I still, still have to develop.
And then Zach, the individual lots where stores would come in, there's not a minimum on that. So they have variety in size they can use.
Correct, yeah, it would be a mirror in the other commercial industrial districts in town. You cannot have different lot sizes.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, close the public hearing. All right. Council to conduct a public hearing set for this date at six P M. to consider the proposed ordinance text change to chapter twenty-five, article three regarding miscellaneous zoning regulations. Open the public hearing.
Mayor and council, staff was reviewing the zoning code as part of the comprehensive review we are doing. And it came to our attention that there was three regulations in the miscellaneous section that limited residential, multi-building residential development. As you can see, twenty-five, three twenty-five J, it limits to only one building on a lot being used for residential purposes. K is similar where only one building can have sleeping quarters. And L is also similar stating basically it can only be in one building again. This prohibits multi-building apartment development. And we've kind of reviewed other apartment complexes in town, and this has been enforced consistently. By doing, repealing these three, that would allow for multiple apartment buildings on a single lot, which would allow for more consolidated parking, less surveying, as you can see my staff comments. And then additionally, I'm looking to repeal regulation D, which is related to floodplain stuff. And if you recall, we updated the floodplain overlay zone last year. So it's become a redundant regulation. And researching these, D's been in place since nineteen fifty-seven, and the others three since at least nineteen seventy-four. The planning commission was in favor of adopting these to help promote development of multifamily and housing density, and made a positive recommendation on the approval of this. And likewise, staff is requesting a waiver of the three readings.
Okay, close the public hearing. All right. Ten, resolution and ordinances. Council to consider action on the first reading of the ordinance amending chapter twenty-five, article three, section twelve, dealing with P B C planned business center regulations and performance standards. An ordinance of the city of Scottsbluff, Nebraska, amending chapter twenty-five, article three, section twelve of the Scottsbluff Municipal Code, dealing with P B C planned business center regulations and amending the performance standards therein, providing for an effective date and providing for publication in pamphlet form.
I move to waive the three readings.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion by Colwell, second by Solomon. Any other questions or comments? Call the roll, please. Solomon?
Yes.
Vidlaq?
Yes.
Scanlon?
Yes.
McCarrigan?
Yes.
Colwell?
Yes.
All right, so now we need to approve the ordinance. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay, motion by Scanlon, second by Vidlaq. Any other questions, comments? Call the roll, please. Scanlon?
Yes.
McCarrigan?
Yes.
Solomon?
Yes.
Colwell?
Yes.
Vidlaq?
Yes.
Okay, B, council to consider action on the first reading of the ordinance amending chapter twenty-five, article three, section twenty-five, dealing with miscellaneous regulations. Kim?
An ordinance of the city of Scottsbluff, Nebraska, amending chapter twenty-five, article three, section twenty-five of the Scottsbluff Municipal Code, dealing with miscellaneous regulations, repealing sub paragraphs D, J, K, and L of twenty-five dash three dash twenty-five as they are addressed in other zoning regulations, relettering sub paragraphs, providing for an effective date and providing for publication in pamphlet form. And I'll move to waive the three readings for item ten B.
A second.
Okay, motion by Scanlon, second by Solomon. Any questions, comments? Call the roll, please. Vidlaq?
Yes.
Colwell?
Yes.
McCarrigan?
Yes.
Solomon?
Yes.
Scanlon?
Yes.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve the ordinance?
I move to approve the ordinance.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay, motion by Colwell, second by Solomon. Any questions, comments? Call the roll, please. McCarrigan?
Yes.
Scanlon?
Yes.
Colwell?
Yes.
Vidlaq?
Yes.
Solomon?
Yes.
Okay, eleven, bids and awards. A, council to discuss and consider action on awarding the bid for eighteen new self-contained breathing apparatus, S C B A, and accessories for the fire department to Sandry Fire Supply in the amount of one hundred and seventy-three thousand eight hundred and fifty-two dollars.
Tom Shingill, Fire Department, I was asked to bring some toys for show and tell as well. So before you is the bid for consideration to award the Sandry Fire Supply. They were, a complete bid, took no exceptions. We did have an additional bidder from FireTech. They did take some exceptions based on the bid specifications. And upon further review, I also found that some of their lines did not add up wholly. So I went back to some invoices that we've had in the past. And if we add those compared to, so we can compare apples to apples with the other bid, they're actually very close, even though the current bid shows that they're about thirty-four thousand dollars less, almost thirty-five thousand dollars less. So we're asking to consider Sandry and award it since they're in the complete meeting of the bid specs. Some of the things I wanted to address that were, that were asked, why I brought some of the examples, our current air packs. Heads-up display is integrated into the mask itself. You have to put in a separate battery. Same with the voice communication amplification, it's a separate battery. The M S A air pack that was bid by Sandry has one central battery supply that runs all of that, the communications, the heads-up, and the personal alert safety system, which is required. For one of the packs, we asked for to also have integrated thermal imaging capabilities, which on the, on the M S A puts it right into the personal alert safety system and air gauge, which is activated simply by lifting up. We, in the past, have utilized funkier, heavier, separate thermal imaging. And we're not looking at replacing this totally. There is a use for this. But when you're managing hose and tools, it's a lot easier if it's already there to just, to lift up and take a quick scan, looking for fire, looking for victims. We did purchase some of these smaller thermal, they can clip right onto the pack, which would be similar, but they spin around, they get lost, they get flipped over. So they work, but they're not ideal, especially again, when you're managing hose and tools. So that gives kind of an idea of the why we put some of these items in our bits specs. I'll leave it kind of brief if there's any questions or specific things you'd like to know.
How old is that?
This pack here is about fifteen years old. Some of our newer packs are about eleven years old. So we're just over that ten-year mark. What kind of spurred this was we need, we found that a lot of our cylinders are expiring and need to be replaced. And we had been planning a complete replacement of all of our self-contained breathing apparatus to include those cylinders at about the ten-year mark. So we've been sinking about twenty thousand a year for that, not quite ten years, we're a little ahead of time. But we do have the funds available for that. So this is under two hundred thousand dollar.
So how have the thermal units helped you in fires that you thought?
I'm sorry?
Have you used the thermal units to help you out?
I'll pass around here. Look through there. So the thermal imaging uses technology to basically see through smoke, sees through the dark, sees through most everything except for water and glass. The idea is it gives you that resolution of shapes and different things. It'll also give you temperatures and a color scale to show you if there's fire or hot spots.
Hot spots in the wall. Well, thank you.
Yes.
Yeah. Any other questions or?
What else?
And we'll be using M F O funds to pay for them. So that's funds specific to the fire department dedicated to projects just like this. And they have been setting some of those funds aside for this project. What do you do with your old equipment? Is there a, is it unusable or is there a productive use we can use it for?
There could be a use for it. We have to find out what that use is. They're not totally obsolete, but they do become a little more harder to maintain as technology changes and evolves. But there might be a department that might need them or that could make use of them, or we could repurpose them for something else.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion by Scanlon, second by Colwell. Any other questions or comments? Call the roll, please. Colwell?
Yes.
Solomon?
Yes.
Vidlaq?
Yes.
Scanlon?
Yes.
McCarrigan?
Yes.
Twelve, reports from staff, boards, and commissions. A, council to discuss and consider action on a request from Colleen Johnson, representing Old West Balloon Fest, for funding to help defray the cost of an event held in August two thousand twenty-three.
Good evening, mayor and council. Tonight, we have Colleen Johnson with the Old West Balloon Fest here to give you a quick presentation and answer any questions you might have about the event. But she's requesting twenty thousand from our community programming fund, which derives from our general fund, and it's in pretty good shape this year. Liz and I went through the budget, so we're sitting pretty in that. This is a great event for our community. It's very smart economic-wise, so we'll just let her come up here and present to you, and I'll be here if you have any questions after.
Nothing like being in the hot seat. How's everybody? Different kind of fire going on with my presentation. Do you have the slide show? Can you show you? Hey, thank you. So Old West Balloon Fest is in our ninth year this year. We're super excited about bringing you the event again in August, seventh through twelfth. So we had record-breaking attendance last year. Scottsbluff County Tourism released impact figures for the event. They were based on lodging and sales tax collected from August ninth through fourteenth. Approximately twelve thousand five hundred out-of-town visitors visited the six-day event. On average, those visitors spent a hundred and ninety-one dollars per person in lodging, gas, food, and merchandise. Based on those figures, two million three hundred eighty-seven thousand five hundred dollars was spent in Scottsbluff County during the six-day event. Thank you. Orintra Community Foundation volunteered to do a license plate study for us so that we can kind of see where we're pulling people from, how our marketing is working. And so they did this on a Saturday morning. Unfortunately, they had to leave a little bit early, so I don't think this reflects the total amount of cars that were actually in attendance. Total cars were seven hundred and thirty-three, and a few averaged for people per car, which is, which is what they're anticipating or what they base their averages off of. We had a total of five hundred and seventy-seven cars from Nebraska with a total of forty-four counties represented. Scottsbluff County had three hundred and twenty-two cars, Wyoming, license plate seventy-two, and total states represented nineteen. So that's a lot of states that we're pulling visitors from. Next slide, please. The Night Glow at W N T C is the only free event that we offer. They don't have to have a parking pass. The parking pass, if you want to park in close at the college, you can park up top or if you have a handicap parking. And thirty-five hundred attended the Night Glow in two thousand twenty-two. The Mass Ascension at Mitchell Airfield, visitors attending the two-morning Mass Ascensions and competitions purchased food, drink, and merchandise from over twenty local vendors. New competition and special shapes will be added to the two thousand twenty-three lineup. My girl, she's one of our crew members, isn't she adorable? And it is for everybody, from little ones up to a hundred years, as long as you can. We even have handicapped, if you want to sit in your car and watch, we have that available as well. New this year, we're offering youth balloon camp. So kids will learn about the science of ballooning through hands-on learning. It'll be from nine-thirty to eleven-thirty, Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday morning. Campers will help assemble a hot air balloon, learn about the different parts, put the balloon together, and then weather permitting, the pilots will be able to tether the children. We're hoping to service a hundred and fifty kids. If I can get some balloon pilots to come early, which means taking a whole week off work, unless you've got some of my retired pilots, will at least be able to service a hundred and fifty kids. And I'm anticipating that once we make the press release, that that's, that you can register online for that, that we'll have a bunch of kids registering. The event is free and sponsored by U S Bank. And I'm looking for a couple of other sponsors because the kids will get a T-shirt too. So we're just trying to cover that cost. And the Old West Balloon Fest, I used to be the president of the Chamber in Mitchell. And so it started kind of as a small thing, bringing a craft fair to Mitchell, bringing some other things. Once the balloon fest was over on Saturday, and it's kind of snowballed into this huge craft fair. We had eighty vendors last year. We already have eighty vendors signed up for this year. So we're hoping to have a hundred and twenty or more. And the city of Mitchell has helped with keynote funds to put this event on. So it just means that we're kind of bringing people and keeping them to stay, a reason to stay, something for them to do before the Night Glow and gearing. So our marketing program, we've committed eighteen thousand dollars to promote Old West Balloon Fest. Our marketing includes a Nebraska tourism grant that we received thirty-five hundred dollars, Royal Radio ad spots, thirty-second television spots on NBC Nebraska, advertisements in Inspire Magazine, Star Herald. And then our biggest really huge detractor is social media. We all know social media is huge. So we've got a gal that's doing our ads for Facebook, and she does a really good job. An event of this magnitude takes, takes everyone to help. Village of Moral, Cities of Tarrytown, Gearing in Scottsbluff are supporting the event with keynote funds. I received my letter today that Gearing has agreed to do a ten thousand dollar for hotel rooms in Gearing. Our sponsors, right now, we have a thirty-five thousand dollar commitment. We're asking for twenty thousand dollars in community programming funds to offset the pilots staying in Scottsbluff as well as bringing in special shapes. The special shapes are not free, they charge to attend the event. This is one that we'll be attending. Her name is Tommy O., and she's a favorite. And then the next slide is our new special shape that will be here this year that has agreed to come. And his name is Snowbird. So we respectfully ask for the funds to help to fray the costs of hotels and the special shapes. Any questions?
How much did we do last year, Colleen?
Forty thousand.
Forty?
Where do the balloon crews come from? Is it mainly the Midwest?
Well, I mean, we have a bunch of pilots from Colorado. We have pilots from Montana, Texas, California, so they're traveling quite a distance to come. We do offer an incentive, a hundred and fifty dollar gas card, which is nothing if you're coming from Texas. So we have new pilots that are coming from Hot Springs, South Dakota. We've got a few pilots coming from Kansas and a few pilots from New Mexico. Unfortunately, we're the only Nebraska pilots, but I'm trying to change that. So the thought is that if we can get the kids excited about ballooning, we can offer a Part Ninety-One school, which means we can actually train pilots. My husband and I are both commercial pilots. And if you're fourteen, you can attend our Part Ninety-One ground school and get your student pilot license, and then we can train you because it is a dying sport. Albuquerque International Balloon Fiesta had their fiftieth anniversary this year, and fifty percent of those pilots retired after that. So that's not why, that's why we're not seeing the numbers of pilots attending events anymore. So I'm doing everything I can to try to attract pilots to come here.
The additional money that we gave last year, was that also because of the national event or?
It was, yeah. We had to house the national staff, which was twenty-five rooms just with the staff. And then the nationals pilots, we had almost fifty pilots. And then our Old West pilots, we had thirty pilots, so that was quite a bit of rooms.
Okay.
We're hoping for forty this year. So we'll put twenty in Gearing and twenty in Scottsbluff. And for five days, that adds up.
Any other questions, comments?
We actually have ten thousand in the budget to do this, so it'd be another ten thousand coming out of community program.
I think the ten thousand dollars is earmarked for marketing.
So this is?
It's in addition.
Yeah, okay, so.
I guess that was budgeted before I came. I guess that was budgeted before I came and asked for this money. The marketing budget was...
I've seen the emails, so, yeah. Okay, so we'll be actually $10,000 for marketing and $20,000 for this. So, we'll be $30,000 for us.
Okay. And last year, it was 40 and 10?
Yes.
So, you got 50.
It was 50 total last year.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments?
What's in there? What's in that budget? Thank you.
Okay.
Sorry.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's in the pencil.
All right. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion by Scanlon, second by Colwell. Any other questions or comments?
Have any?
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think... A few years ago, when we passed the odd tax, the spirit of doing that was to provide some of that money back to recreational tourism. It's exactly what we'll be doing this month.
Okay.
Thank you for your ridiculously hard work on this event every year. Nationals or no nationals, it's amazing what you pull together.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Call the roll, please. Solomon.
Yes.
Bidla.
Yes.
Scanlon.
Yes.
McCarrigan.
Yes.
Colwell.
Yes.
Thank you. The council to discuss and consider action on a request from Brenda Lacy, representing the Scottsbluff Area Visitors Bureau, for funding to help eat in expenses as a result of the USA National Gravel Grinder Race to be held in Scottsbluff County September 2023.
Hello again. So, we've got another great tourism-related event that's happening here. We've actually won the bid for the next two years for the USA Gravel Championships, so we've got the whole team here behind me. They've all came, and they're requesting $10,000 from our community programming fund, so I'll let them give their pitch and I'm back if you have any questions.
All right, off to the next slide, please. I'm Aaron Rains, just a normal citizen assisting the tourism bureaus with securing the bid for this event and organizing and pulling it all off. So, I'm just going to give a kind of a... As much of a high-level overview as I can, and then, they'll take it over. Gravel is not brand-new, it's kind of, it's maybe 20 years old. But it used to be, you know, you set your postcard into an organizer, and 70 of you or your friends, you know, descended on a small town, you went and rode their roads. It's much more complicated than that, it's a really big deal. There's events out there with 3,000 and 4,000 people. USA Cycling is the national governing body of cycling in its whole, so road racing, BMX, mountain biking, all the different disciplines. And this is the first time they have done a national championship for gravel cycling, which is a really big deal, because historically, like I said, it's not a... It's kind of a small deal, and it's booming, and it's growing, and it's the fastest-growing part of cycling. And so, the reason, you know, we were chosen, obviously, is because you can leave downtown Gearing or downtown Scottsbluff and be on gravel in half a mile, and stay on it for 130 miles, in fact. So, the... Just to give you an idea of, you know, who's coming, yes, you have world champions and all these kind of stuff, professionals who are making their living at this, but there are also, you know, there's people going for the 90-year-old age group national championship, and there's 11 to 13-year-olds and all this kind of stuff. So, it is truly, you know, an event for everyone, not just a small core group of hardcore cyclists. And so, you know, all these people are going to come to our town, they're coming from everywhere. I would say 99.9% of the people racing are going to be not from here. Florida, Maine, you know, all corners of the US. Probably a strong contingent of Colorado, which we see with my event, the Ruby Raniho. But, you know, anywhere and everything between, all ages, all this kind of stuff. So, the... Let's see, I've kind of forgot what I wrote down here, is it like a week ago? So, the far-reaching, long-lasting impact for tourism. We've already seen a massive social response in our own channels and USA Cycling, and some of the marquee cycling news sources as well. And I was on a phone call with a bike shop today in Arizona, and everybody in the back is like, "I already got my room, you know, booked for that weekend." So, it's making its way around, people are already planning, people are already visiting. I happened to be at Flyover a couple of days ago, when Brenda was there, and we saw a Colorado plate with a gravel bike on top. So, it's already happening, people are staying. I know several stories like that. So, it's getting a lot of traction, and I think we have a lot to gain, not just this year and next year, but, you know, as we grow other events that are not related to USA Cycling as well. And lastly, like, there's a massive opportunity for local participation in volunteers, if people want to ride. We'll also have a big expo downtown Gearing. You know, there's going to be events all week, people all week, lots of lodging, lots of hotel and restaurant expenditures, that kind of thing. So, that's sort of what to expect. I think Carla's up next.
We can go to the next slide. I'm Carla Needen-Streiks, I'm Director of Tourism for the City of Gearing. So, Erin started the excitement from a city perspective. I think we all need to kind of understand what our cities are in for. Obviously, we're going to have a national focus on all of our communities, and as Erin said, we've already seen that national focus come, and always had, already have riders in. They're here riding the courses, they're giving you to know our communities and what their influence in September. The economic impact is great, it's going to affect literally every business in all of our communities. You have the largest percentage of hotel rooms in Scottsbluff, you have the largest percentage of retail, you have the largest percentages of restaurant nightlife, but literally, all the businesses in your community and Gearing and the entire area are going to see the impact of this event when it comes into town. And the national focus on our destination, I think, is one of the most exciting things. This will bring national media before and during the event. They're going to take a look at areas of a community that a lot of people have never been to, not even been to Nebraska. So, we have an opportunity to showcase our communities, not only for this event, for a lot of visitors, travelers that will be coming in the future. So, as a municipality, you're going to want to know what your return on investment is going to be, and that's going to be very easy to track. Things that aren't going to be easy to track are the number of visitors that are already coming and cyclists that are coming in, but certainly, in that week that we'll be hosting the Gravel Nationals, you're going to see that in your lodging stays and your sales tax collections throughout your community. I think one of the things I'm most excited about is, as cities, we quality... Look on our quality of life, and we're always looking to get our residents and people in the area involved in healthy lifestyles, and biking and walking and utilizing our trails. And this is just going to bring that much more focus on cycling and Gravel Nationals and all those things that make us a healthy community and a quality-of-life community. It's going to bring the focus on to that. So, this event certainly promises to be one of the biggest things we've done jointly as communities. We've kind of set a precedent with State Golf, the Balloon Nationals, and even the Eclipse. And it shows everybody, and not only in the state of Nebraska, but the entire region, how small communities can accomplish great things by working together. So, we're hopeful that you'll be with us in a partnership. We've got a great team of people on our executive committee, our local organizing committee. We bring all talents to the table, and we've got a big task ahead of us, but together, we're going to accomplish great things and bring a great event to our communities for the next two years. So, Brenda's up, I think.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Well, as you can quite well imagine, an event of this magnitude comes with a price tag, but believe it or not, it's really not that much money. We will pay USA Cycling $30,000 for one year. So, we did get the bid for 2023 and '24, but for one year, we paid them $30,000. And we do have a few sponsors already and places secured. Of course, the Scottsbluff Area Visitors Bureau has secured $10,000. And then, we have a lot of opportunities to make back some of the rest of the money for that $30,000. In-kind opportunities for the City of Gearing, for the services that they will provide for helping us host the race. And then, we have a unique opportunity also with in-kind opportunities from USA Cycling. And I'll just give you an example, it's not probably an exact example, but it just gives you an idea. Say we need 300 barricades, and they're willing to bring 300... Or we need, they're willing to bring 200 of them, then the 100 that we provide, they will give us back money towards the 100 that we provided, just so they don't have to haul as much equipment into the city. And then, we also have an opportunity to sell our expo spaces. The expo is going to take place on Friday, all day long. Lots of opportunities for kids to decorate their bikes and learn about cycling, so it's not only kind of a learning opportunity for families, but also, of course, we'll have different vendors there selling different equipment and that type of thing, bicycle, very expensive bicycles. If you want a $20,000 bike, we can set you up. But we have the opportunity to sell 130 expo spaces as well, so we will make back some profit. We're only coming, seeking funding for 2023 because it is an inaugural year, and we don't know how it's going to go yet. So, then, at the end of next year, or at the end of this year, once we are able to see what is left in our budget, then we'll plan for 2024. And also, we estimate that with 100% lodging tax occupancy in Scottsbluff County, so just for two days, we have the opportunity to make about seven... Make back about $7,500. And when I say 100%, that is every hotel and every camping space in Scottsbluff County. But the City of Gearing is actually setting up some extra camping for us, so that's not really going to be included in this number. They love to camp, they, you know, they bring their own campers, and some of them have two and three bikes, and have to have a little place to, you know, fix things and that type of thing, so they like to be outside. Erin's probably laughing at me, right? Because I probably don't use the right terminology. But we will set up the fund at the Oregon Trail Community Foundation, which also helps the community. But it would be just a nightmare for me to try to do all these bills through Scottsbluff County. So, we decided that we needed to set up the fund at Oregon Trail Community Foundation. And this is just an incredible opportunity for this county, and it has brought just an incredible amount of excitement from people all over in the cycling world, including the USA Cycling team. And we would love for you to be a part of that and ask for $10,000 to help us with the 2023 inaugural year of our gravel championship race. We would love to partner with you. Any questions?
About how many people participate in it?
Well, since it's an inaugural year, we don't know, but we're hoping right at about 2,500 people. And with each of those people, we count 3.5 that come with them. So, we're going to have a very large population of people in our community.
And it's a single course that's 130 miles?
Yes, there's smaller courses within that 130 miles, but the 130 miles is the largest course. And then, there's some that are broke down into smaller units for people who are not professional riders, even younger people. Today, in our meeting, we were talking about 11-year-olds, so they'll do more of a 30-mile mark.
I have a question for Erin. What's the feedback you've had from previous bikers? I know you've organized some other biking events. What's the feedback you've had from them?
I, you know, I think the feedback that I've gotten, basically, we got this bid for a couple of reasons. One of the main reasons is because Ruby is so successful. People all over the nation know that event. You know, last year, we had 600-plus folks, and they've seen the list as it goes, it is everywhere. And that was a big question, if you watch the social media stuff, like, is it just USA Cycling, or like, who's involved with this? And a lot of it was, you know, Erin or Ruby who is involved. They're designing the course and all this stuff, and so, that's really...
Okay. And you all competed with some pretty big venues to get this.
Yeah, I mean, we don't know, they don't let, you know, everyone know who's competing against you.
We've heard rumors.
And I think one of the things that Erin left off for the reasons that we were chosen is because our enthusiasm for our community. They are just amazed at how well we work together. Carla mentioned all of the events that we collaborate on, and they are just so impressed with our community and the things that we do and how hard we work together to make things happen.
That's great. Thanks so much.
I'll move to approve the funding request.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Motion by Scanlon, second by Bidla. Any other questions or comments?
Sorry about the abs last night, Brenda.
I know.
Well, thank you guys for organizing this.
Call the roll, please. Scanlon.
Yes.
McCarrigan.
Yes.
Solomon.
Yes.
Colwell.
Yes.
Bidla.
Yes.
Thank you. See, council to receive the annual report from the Police Department.
Ladies and gentlemen, Captain Brian Lawson.
He promised to make it short.
I'll try to raise this a little maybe. All right. Brian Lawson from the Police Department. Thanks for having us. With your package, you would have got the annual report for 2022. And I'm here to present it to you and give some highlights from it. Probably the, probably the thing at the top of our minds the most for the past year or two is staffing. It's not something that is unique to the City of Scottsbluff. It's being felt all across the country, and we've tried to get creative and retention and recruiting to alleviate that. We did just had a test last week where all five applicants completed the process successfully, so we have, I think, that's the last I heard, I was out of the office. I think that's accurate. Going on to the next slide, of course, you guys met Ricky, or I'm sorry, I called him Ricky. You guys met Duke at a couple of meetings ago. The vision statement, mission statements, and our core values are self-explanatory. The age and experience, if you go... One more, maybe? Two more? I actually, my attention was caught to this first item, the average age of sworn personnel, and I think, I think the chief actually drags that down. It's a, it's a pretty high number when you, when I come out of my office and see the number of young guys walking around the department. So, there's got to be some explanation, but it's on me. And you can see that, so with the number of new guys, if you get down to the bottom with the average years of police experience, being 11, about 10 years ago, that number was about 17. So, it's a fluctuating number. The next slide is the organizational chart. Shows a couple vacancies for the officers that we're still trying to hire. But it's a reflection of what we're currently at. With some minor exceptions, we currently have our administrative sergeant that oversees investigation, work in the road, topic for absence of another supervisor, some small things like that. If you go to the next slide, the revenues. These are all the revenues the department generates throughout the year. Of course, service to Terrytown, a relationship with the Wing Task Force, and some of the reimbursements there. The second highest, or the third highest revenue is car options. It's a, it's a big job. It's, it's a big job within the police department too, and, and the administrative assistant, Crystal Walker, does a lot to be a used car salesman essentially throughout the year. The compliance officer assists with those as well. And it does generate revenue. Next slide, operations division, that's overseen by Captain Kite. Probably one of the biggest changes that, that he's been dealing with is increases in training requirements, statutes have changed that require thirty-two hours of continuing education to law enforcement officers, and, and just a, a year ago, that was twenty-eight, and even less than that, two, three, four years ago. And Lance has done a great job in, in enhancing the training capabilities of the department and who's receiving it.
So on the training, is that done online, or do you guys have to go to Grand Island for those hours?
It's a, it's a mix, but primarily, I mean, a lot of it is online, primarily in-house by staff that's trained in, in certain topics, but some of the courses are at the academy.
Okay.
Where we try to minimize the amount of, of that expense. It's, it's a lot costlier, of course. Support services, I already, that division. The, one of the big focuses for this year, for, for two thousand twenty-two, it started in two thousand twenty-two and hopefully comes to fruition this year, is the implementation of a automatic license plate reader program within the department. We envision using that in areas identified through crime statistics as high crime areas, and be able to identify vehicles entering and exiting those areas to try and identify patterns and, and suspects. Still working with our, our records management system and, and its capabilities in doing some direct reporting to the state. Unfortunately, that's been on two or three annual reports now. The vendor is, has been sluggish, but, but we continue to work to write that shit. The canine, fly, Duke, the best dog I've, I've ever worked beside, I guess, I guess you really wouldn't say that, 'cause I sit at a desk, but sometimes he walks by my office. A really good dog, really, really capable dog, both on the patrol side and the drug side, certainly. Some of his statistics, in twenty-two, had twenty-seven narcotic deployments, ten patrol deployments. He, he trained sixteen hours a month, and that's, that's low balling, that's, that's, he, he trains every shift with this dog, certainly so. But the requirements, the reporting to sustain his certification is sixteen hours per month, and, and that's easily attained. He's assisted probation with numerous searches of probationers, some of which have resulted in the discovery of narcotics and further arrest to school resource officers. Back in two thousand two is when this program started within the department with the COPS grant, that funding didn't last forever, and the police department, through partnerships with Scottsburg Public Schools and now Western Nebraska Community College, have continued this program. It's, with some of the staffing issues we've had, we've had to pull these guys for, you know, maybe a couple shifts here and there, and you know how valuable you are, or they are, when, when you do that, because you start hearing from the school administrators wanting the, the guy that's doing the schedule to come up and, and sit in their office to take that place, because they, they are very, very needed in the schools, and, and are what some of the busiest officers within the department, for sure. All right.
Captain Watson, how, how's the elementary schools covered?
So, yeah, so, the, both, both of the officers at the middle school and the high school float around to the elementary school, there's no constant presence there. And it just depends, it, it seems like one of them's always busy if a call comes in, so whoever's not busy's going to handle a situation, and, and, and these are situations not unlike they're seeing at the, the middle school and, and the high school, where a, a student may be out of control and throwing a desk or something. That does occur, it's not as prevalent as, as the middle and high school.
Do you ever see them expanding, like the federal government, helping fund the cost at all the schools?
Yeah, I, I think, I think in, in some of the more recent, you know, looking at, at some of the issues with staffing, it, it seems like a lot of, of agencies are pulling people out because of that. I don't, I don't think that's something we're interested in doing, we haven't, we haven't got that bad yet, and like I said, we've had to use them here and now on the schedule to, to fill some gaps. I, I don't know on the federal level what to anticipate there, I really don't. I would, I would hope so, because it's, it's very important. Next, oh, you already went there. Okay, the internship program, this has been a very successful program within the police department, these, the three that we worked with last year all had great relationships with, with members of the department. They, they typically work, they start out in records, which they hate, and then they move to administration, working with Lance or I, and then investigations and patrol, and they're chomping at the bit to get into the investigations and patrol, and they, and they have a lot of fun. Now, but none of the, the, the three here from last year have all moved on to continue their education elsewhere, and maybe someday we'll get them back to the community. All right, next slide. A little bit of an activity summary. The upper-left graph shows the Scottsburg Police Department total calls of service per year. Because of drastic changes in our operations with COVID, twenty twenty is a lot lower, but we're tracking right along, total number of calls for the last two years.
Are twenty-one, twenty-two more typical, what you've had?
They are, they are. And even, even going back to two thousand five, six, seven, that's the numbers, right around there, seventeen to eighteen thousand. The, the lower right graph is how we compare to the Gearing Police Department, Scottsburg Police Department, they get about a third of the calls that we do in a year, granted we have fifty percent more staff than they do. Next slide. Total arrests, that again, compares to three agencies, and they're, they're at a third or less as they compare to us. And some are right, or some of the highlighted, more serious crimes in which arrests were made. The seventeen assaults on officers is, is concerning, it hasn't always been that high.
Is that, is that Scottsbluff number included with Terry Town, or do you share that jurisdiction?
It does, it does, yes. All of these numbers I'm providing you include Terry Town members, they, we don't, I didn't separate those out in this year's report. Next slide, written reports. So, a hundred and forty-four reports per officer is what it equals out for the year. Some reports are gonna, are gonna take the officer maybe an hour to complete, and some of them days, weeks, even longer. But, but by and large, I mean, it's very manageable. Nobody likes typing reports, that's the part they don't show on COPS, or we wouldn't get anybody interested. But it's a necessary evil. Next slide. This slide shows you some of the drug seizure amounts. One of the, one of the most troubling is probably the twenty-two hundred pills of fentanyl. I was speaking with our task force officer last week, because he and I had a, had a conversation probably a year, year and a half ago, where he was telling me that, that people were paying thirty to forty dollars for each pill, and he says that it's, it's down now to about twenty to thirty dollars a pill, but that's just an insane amount of money for a small blue pill. But we're seeing it, certainly in our community. These, these numbers, I should point out also, don't reflect anything from the task force. So we have an officer in the task force, but these numbers are just Scottsburg PD cases only. The task force focuses on mid-to-upper level distribution, and the department deals mostly with user amounts, but we do, in the next slide, you'll see we make some arrests for control, or distribution as well. We made sixteen arrests for distribution last year, and that's not including task force activity, nor are any of these seizure amounts, any of the task force drugs that we seize. Two hundred and twenty-four subjects were arrested for possession of controlled substance, that includes marijuana. Two hundred and thirty-four were drug paraphernalia, so, what, ten people we, we got with paraphernalia, and they didn't have any drug left, but everybody that had drug, it goes, it goes hand in hand, they gotta have something to use it with, it can be a piece of tinfoil to a six, six-holes hookah pipe, just depends. Go ahead, next slide.
Captain Watson, the distribution one, do you guys hand those over then to federal court, or is that processed here locally?
No, so, the laws, the laws in Nebraska changed about six, seven years ago, to where it's, it, it's really comparable to sentencing guidelines in the federal system, so most of the cases, all the cases that were run at, at Scottsburg PD are, are in state court. The, the task force works with federal agencies, and if we had a, if we had a distribution case in which we seized such an insane amount of money or drugs, we would probably seek the assistance of the task force, and they might involve a federal agency, but all these cases are, are state court. It's possible that some, some of the subjects from these cases then went on to cooperate and, and leading to a federal investigation, but that's outside of what we're doing. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
And answer your question.
Did you see like an increase in the heroin once they?
We, we were, we were, but not, not so much in the two thousand twenty-two numbers, and I think, was it like point eight?
Yeah, I just wondered with the new laws related to oxycodone and that of it.
Well, we certainly did, when, when, when prescriptions got tightened, we certainly did see an increase in heroin and then fentanyl, absolutely. That's, that's driving that, a hundred percent. Okay, alcohol-related activity, I, when I looked at the minor possession arrests for two thousand twenty-two, it seemed like a low, low number, so I went back to some of our previous annual report, and we have arrested right on ninety to a hundred before, in, in a couple subsequent years. Really, the guys just aren't encountering minors in possession of alcohol as much anymore. Marijuana is so, much more easily accessible, it's easier for kid, our, the kids in our community to purchase marijuana products than it is a six-pack of beer. So, that, that could be why we're seeing this. Fifty open containers, you know, most of the open container arrests come from traffic stop, and in a subsequent slide, you'll, you'll see a lot of traffic stop activity. Code enforcement, the compliance officer stays busy. A hundred and fifty-five code compliant calls, related calls last year, and four hundred and thirty-four animal complaints, and he handled all those. We had one thousand three hundred and eighty-one animal complaints total last year, and he handled four hundred and fifty of them. So, you know, a lot of them come in the nighttime hours with barking dogs, things like that, so, and, and he's, we only have him working during the day shift, so a lot of those animal complaints are gonna be handled by officers. He sent out ninety-four letters of abatement, sixteen snow and ice removal notices when persons or businesses wouldn't, they didn't clear their locks, forty nuisance-related warnings were issued. Then you see the citations for leash law and warnings as well. Okay, next slide. The task force, the human trafficking task force, this, we, we've, we've seen a decrease in the number of cases we're working, but I don't think it's, I don't think it's because it's not occurring. And the chief recently got us meeting again with, with the local group, so hopefully we'll, we'll see some increases in proactivity there in the months coming forward. Still a very viable program, viable group of people to target that. Traffic accidents, in, when I was, when I was compiling these numbers, I found a, a little bit of a trend, an upward trend, about fifty, fifty accidents more, increased for the past three years. Weather, I think, is, is part of that, as I drive to work in the morning after it snows, it seems like, it takes me eight to nine minutes, according to Google, to get to work, and I hear five accidents in that time, the time that I'm driving after a snowstorm, so I think weather has affected that. The, the, in the, in the narrative up above, it kind of just describes, we made two thousand five hundred and sixty-four traffic stops last year, six hundred and eighty-four of those were from grant activity. We do about a half dozen grants, traffic-related grants with the Office of Highway Safety throughout the year. That puts officers in the car, pays their overtime, and their, their focus is traffic enforcement. It's difficult when you're running, running call to call, or call to the station to type report to work traffic, but these grants really allow for a focus in that area, and that's, that's how you hope to decrease your number of accidents in, in traffic enforcement. And I kind of highlighted some of the more common violations associated with the accidents in this slide as well.
Captain Watson, with the numbers you're showing, how far down are you on staff right now? Are you where you need to be, or are you still short a little bit?
Well, we're, we're down two positions.
Okay.
For what, what our authorized strength is. We're authorized thirty-two, and we're at thirty officers, sworn out, sworn positions.
Okay. How many are at the academy right now?
One.
One.
One, two in FTO, one on light duty, two openings, so we get spread pretty thin pretty quick.
And you have five coming in, just started coming into the process?
No, we just have a list of five.
A list of five.
We have two openings, so we have a list of five to fill those two openings, well.
Okay.
We're, we're making progress.
Okay.
It's slow, but we are.
Next slide. Here's that trend I was talking about, from twenty to twenty-two, at number of accidents per year. So we'll, we'll keep an eye on that. If there's anything we can do to try and reach a plateau there, we'll, we'll be working towards that. All right, next slide. Crime summary, as I, as I completed this slide and compared it to, to previous years, nothing jumped out as, you know, being really high or low, it pretty much stays the same from year to year. The crimes against property are on the left, against persons on the right. I would highlight here with crimes against children and, and sex offenses, they, they take a, you know, an extreme amount of time to investigate. The investigators working those cases are serving multiple search warrants to social media, phone companies to, to obtain the evidence to prove those cases. A couple years ago, the end of nineteen or early twenty, there was one case that led to about sixteen arrests, because as the officer kept, or the investigator kept getting search warrant material back, another person would be identified, so it branched off and multiple offenders were arrested out of, out of one case that started out as a runaway case. Next slide. Community engagement or outreach, something that the chief has put a high priority on for years. for years, and, and I think, I think it has benefited us greatly. Of course, we do national night out every year, coffee with a cop on occasion, shop with a cop, we skipped last year. I don't really know the reason, but hope to resume that this year. Adopt school participation continues throughout the year as well. Recently, although through twenty-twenty-two, Corca Sergeant Brass was the Ask a Cop answerer, she's been replaced by Sergeant Eckbert recently. And just for a change of pace for both of them, I think. Okay, go ahead. Another thing that the chief has demanded of us is to, it used to be that we would share who would host a memorial celebration every year for, or a member, a memorial, I guess. And for the last several years, we've just taken that on at the Scottsburg Police Department. We work with the other agencies in doing so. I would point out this year, that it was actually last week was the one-hundredth anniversary of the death of the only Scottsburg police officer to die in the line of duty, his name was Albert Peterson. On April twenty-fifth, nineteen twenty-three, he and Deputy Guy Carlson attempted to arrest a bootlegger, nineteen twenty-three year, in Mitchell, Nebraska. Both men were shot. The Scottsburg Officer Peterson was shot in the abdomen and died about thirty minutes later. The deputy was shot through both forearms, so the guy escaped. About two weeks later, in Keith County, the sheriff there was murdered by the same offender in an attempt to arrest him, and eventually a posse was formed, and I think he was killed in that exchange, if my memory serves me, in a county a couple south of, of Keith County. So we'll do something this year to, to honor him for the hundred-year anniversary of his death. And that's it.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you.
We became accredited last year.
Did I skip that slide? We did become accredited last year.
Awesome, oh, yeah.
We back up, there you go. Yes, as, as part of some of the legislation that came out with the oversight and, you know, increased training, expected in law enforcement through the state legislature, the Crime Commission developed a, an accreditation to ensure agencies were in compliance with the policies to, to meet some of that legislation. We, we authored or updated thirteen policies of the twenty-nine required to be accredited, and on October first, twenty twenty-two, we received, pre-received that accreditation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right.
Thanks, Brian.
Thirteen, council reports informational only, this item is intended for council members to update and inform other council members of meetings attended since the last city council meeting. Do we have any updates?
I've got a report from the zoo. So I have some pictures, so it's not just me talking, you guys can see something, so Wednesday, last Wednesday, we sent all the Gearing High School seniors out, including Captain Watson's son, and so that's our tradition we have in Gearing, we sent a group to the zoo, and that whole handicap ramp, they stayed, and if you've done a deck and had to do all those darn little pieces of wood, they got the whole thing done, so. We had a small crew, I couldn't send out a full group because we had a hundred and thirty kids out, but we're kind of overcommitted, but they pulled off all the work, so I was proud of them, and they got a lot of the work done in the community. The next slide. So we've got a project we're working on at the zoo, these are two metal bed frames, they're going in for the bears, so they're super strong, they can handle the weight of the bears. They have wood bed frames, and the bears kind of tear those apart as a chew toy. So we, our welding instructors, Isaac Brown, is putting those together for them. The zoo bought the steel from B and C Steel, and the beds, when they're done, will be five foot by seven foot, and super strong, so they should be able to stand to pounding. So that's coming along, and there's some progress with the whole bear exhibit. Yeah, that's one of our welders, so that's the frame that is complete, the second frame's just about done, and we'll probably turn them over to the zoo this next week, we'll hand them off to them. So that's the old oxygen machine, part of the AZA accreditation process they're going through. The city had a lot of forethought, they put that animal hospital in when they did the big renovation, I think it was ninety-two, ninety-three. So that animal hospital, one thing we fixed is, that's probably the original oxygen machine that was in that animal hospital, it's on the backside of the zoo where the public doesn't go. And Box Butte Hospital has stepped up to the plate, and they've donated oxygen machine for the zoo, and so the zoo's really excited, I think they're gonna do training on that soon at the hospital. And then they're excited because they'll have an up-to-date machine to take care of animals, and not have to transport them all the way to Denver. Let's see, is there another picture in there? Oh, yeah. So they've got some changes they're doing, they're working on updating a lot of the cages in the off-season, it's coming up to accreditation. The bear enclosure, they're welding out the door a little bit so they can put in a cement frame, so the bear doesn't start digging a den inside the enclosure exhibit space he has. And this is another project they'd like to finish, so they started that in the fall, this is the, on the left is where the bears used to be in the small enclosure before they got moved. On the right is where they used to have different cats, when that right exhibit, the middle area is kind of empty. So what they would like to do is, they're trying to get community support, get some donations, they're trying to get twenty thousand dollars, and they're gonna bring in a welding crew and enclose all that in one giant cage. So the cage on the left where the bears used to be is about a thousand square feet, if they can combine all that area there, it'll be about twenty-five hundred square feet, and then they can bring cats back into the zoo. So, that.
Thank you.
That's it?
Yep. Not as long as Mr. Watson's.
But close.
No, no.
Very nice.
Thank you.
All right, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion by Scanlon, second by Colwell, call the roll, please. Big left?
Yes.
Colwell?
Yes.
McCarrigan?
Yes.
Solomon?
Yes.
Scanlon?
Yes.